Right, well, that's probably pretty real. Well, hi there, everybody. Thank you very much for your patience. We do appreciate it. We've had some technical difficulties that are beyond our ability to rectify at this point. So we're going to continue with a meeting, and we'll get into it, but there'll be some modifications to our meeting today due to the fact that we -- it's required by law that those that want to participate can participate, and unfortunately, our Zoom link that was provided to the public is not an accurate one, and so that puts us in a position to really be unable to make any final decisions without fair due course of our -- of our public. So that sounds fair. With that in mind, we'll go ahead and do a call to order and roll call. Do we have a event somewhere in the mix?
We don't have an event either.
We don't have an event.
I will be the -- I guess I'll be the -- what is it? The Commission Secretary today.
Perfect.
Others duties as assigned, yes. Okay. Chair Myers?
Here.
Commissioner Burling? Commissioner Mitchy? Mickey? Sorry. Commissioner Sowers? Commissioner Brzezinski?
Fantastic. Let's go ahead and stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. There we go. So first, in our meeting this afternoon, we have public appearances. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes, or as otherwise established by the Commission. We're going to stick with three minutes. Matters not appearing on Commission's agenda will not receive action at this meeting, but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Persons are not required to give their names, but it is helpful for speakers to state their names so that they may be identified in the meetings -- sorry, in the minutes of the meeting. With that in mind, do we have anyone from the public that would care to make an appearance? Please step up to the microphone. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Andy. I have lived in Carmel since 1975, or I'd say on the peninsula since 1975. First of all, I want to say that I'm going to miss Sarah. I want to wish her the best of luck. I was so sad when I heard she was leaving. My husband and I have been taking care of Visulobos Park, part of Carmel Cares, and she has been absolutely wonderful to work with, responsive, dedicated, knowledgeable. I mean, the list just could go on and on. So Sarah, I personally am going to miss you. I know Carmel's going to miss you, and I wish you the very best. Okay, I want to talk about trees. I love trees, okay? What I don't love is the damage that I've seen trees do to this beautiful little city, not just to other trees, but to people and people's property. And I've built several houses in Carmel. I mean, I've gone through the process, being in front here with all of you. I am concerned, and I think after this last storm, this is a perfect opportunity for us to really look at this issue. Monterey trees, Monterey pine trees, don't belong in an inhabited area. Monterey trees, pine trees, belong in a forest where there's fires and things to clean them out and up so they don't get so tall and lanky and fall into the damage to property as they have done and continue to do in Carmel. I live on Torrey Street, and the street behind my street was called the Epic Center. I've never seen anything like it in my life. I mean, trees were down, they hit cars, they hit houses, they barely missed people. It's time to address the issue. There are old trees in Carmel that I don't care if they have a few years left. They need to be taken out before they fall down, and I would like -- I don't -- I'm addressing it here because I want the issue to be raised, and I want it to be addressed, and I want it to be talked about, and I want something to be done. Okay?
Thank you, Andy.
Any questions?
Anyone else from the public care to make an appearance?
Is it all right if I do this?
Sure.
Because you were -- I didn't know it was on your plan.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Shirley Moon with Carmel Cares.
Shirley.
And here to talk about the pink Mutt mitts. They were installed about 10 days ago, so we've had a little bit of time to see how they are received. The public is wild for them. I didn't realize how it would be, but the feedback has been very, very positive. We are taking care of 15 dispensers all along the beach so that we can monitor the usage along the beach, and even if we can't modify the behavior of the dog owners who are irresponsible, we are at least able to see the mitts, and they aren't camouflaged any longer. So just wanted you to be up to date, and I'll keep you informed as the process continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Anyone else from the public? Dale?
Dale Byrne, Carmel Cares. I have to say that I'm also equally sad. I get choked up just thinking about it. Sarah's been --
I mean, you're a big guy.
I know, I know, I know. Sarah's been a wonderful supporter of Carmel Cares. She's been an incredible recruiter for us. An example just spoke, Andy, and we're going to miss her, and I'm going to -- she's been a mentor for me as well, because she came from a city where they have a lot of things like this, and she's been coaching me. Also, her husband coached me early on. He has a huge amount of experience, so we're going to miss her, but I'll move on to the next subject. I just attended a community-based social marketing program, and Jessica in Public Works attended it as well, although I didn't ever see her there, but she was there. It was 120 people, I think, on the call, and it was four hours a day, three days, and it was brutal. It was very detailed, and it was about changing people's behavior, and I learned a lot. It turns out, we're already doing a lot of really innovative things. I didn't get to talk about it in the class much, but we're doing some really interesting things, but it showed me that we can zoom in on the 80/20 rule, like there are things -- we're doing a lot of things. Maybe there's some things we could focus on. But the pink bag situation is one they always want you to pilot things first. Well, instead of spending a lot of time and money and studying it, Shirley just went out and did it, and she deserves some credit because it took a lot of work. We're finding out what Public Works does and how much time some of these things take, and we're also paying for it for now, so we're going to need to talk about that in the budget, and we'll talk to Bob about it on our meeting tomorrow. But there are a couple other good things going on. We've got a high school group that adopted the median at Fourth in San Antonio. It turns out it's 120 feet long, and we've had significant discussions with Sarah about what we're going to do, and we got approval for that. It's a median minder program, but we have a new volunteer named James Bronson III, who actually has a lot of horticultural experience. He's a really smart guy, and he's hardworking. He actually cleared the median from Ocean to Seventh, a big one, himself, with a little bit of our help, including Bill Currie who's here. And so he's going to take on that project. I'm going to project manage him. He's going to be the horticulturist, get the plants, and we've got a high school group, the Interact Club at the Carmel High School, is going to actually do the work, and they're going to adopt it and maintain it over time, and they're very excited about it. I would like to get on the schedule for next month for them to come in and sort of present, sort of after the fact, but present to you what they're doing and how they're going to do it so they can start using the plant names and that sort of thing. So if we could get that on the schedule for next month, they're pretty excited about that. Next, this probably should have been on the agenda, but things move fast around here, and everybody's busy. So I have Alan Wheat here to give a presentation on the Ocean Avenue medians, partly because Sarah's going to be leaving, and she's been working with us, so we want to get that continuity, make sure you guys are up to speed on what we're planning on doing, and I'm going to introduce Alan. He's going to take it over. Hopefully, his presentation is up, and he could do a job of explaining that. Alan?
Great. Thanks, Dale. I'm guessing that we've got a pink tie in support of the pink mitts.
Coincidence. But sure, we support it.
So Alan, I'm going to just hand over to you, but ask that you please manage the three minutes for us, okay?
I'll make it as close as I can.
Thank you very much.
My name's Alan Wheat. I'm a horticultural consultant and professor, and I've been working with Sarah on these Ocean Avenue medians, and I'll make this quick. There's many things we've tried to improve as far as pedestrian safety. Briefly, we'll look at this. I would like to continue to keep a band between those two lines, so retail road frontages and so on, you can go to next, is visible from both sides. Safety concerns that we have is a lot of jaywalking, running across the road, and one side might be safe, the other side might be able to drop, so we're going to try and do that with plants and boulders. We're going to have color at the ends to enhance beauty, maintain visibility from the opposite sides of the streets for business exposure. Banners for the city need to remain and become more visible. Many of the plantings that are existing are old, past their prime, or the poor species for the usage. Some tree work needs to be done. There's some that are damaged by trucks and those kind of things, or just the wrong species. I'd like to look at that with the forester as well as we get this going. Next, please. So here's our goals. We're going to make jaywalking seem impossible with boulders and plants and levels of these things. Look like, hey, it's not easy to go here. I should just go down to the crosswalk, you know? I don't think I can jump over those rocks before that car comes. I want to use low-growing plants at the ends, so we have -- motorists can see people in the crosswalk from a distance and not be surprised. They should be stopping anyway, but they don't. I'd like to thin some of the trees and train any new trees with proper filtered light so we support the understory that we're going to plant. I'm selecting plants that have little, no maintenance. Can I take these conditions? Next, please. Of hot soil in the medians that dry out, these would be locally sourced boulders that would create plant pockets and add some texture and depth. Next, please. Here are some of the species we would go through. These are a lot of them. I'd like to use 100% natives, but I'd like to at least get 80% natives. I'd like to see that throughout Carmel and even residences. And there's plenty of flowering species. A lot of people think about the fourth dunes when they think, you know, color, but no, we have a lot of native plants in color. So next, please. So a few of these on here, and these are all local natives, and they have different bloom periods to enhance throughout the season, and even winter and all that, and seasonal interest. Next, please. And some grasses that give movement in these things, and these are all clean plants that won't litter the street and make streamlined maintenance. Okay? Next. Now, this is more in the bulk of the medians, not at the ends. Are some shrubbery that don't get into that visibility window of the retail frontage on the other side, but still in the pockets of boulders, create these different levels of vegetation and have a happy plant community. Okay? Next. And some non-native species. This was from our brainstorm to put at the ends, and this is something the Carmel volunteers can replant different colors for. Okay, is there one more? I don't think so. That is it? All right. Did I make it under three minutes?
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate it. Dale, is that presentation on your website? Or it's on? We've got it? Okay, great. I'm sure the community at large would love to see the -- all the breakdown of the plants, and might encourage them to actually plant some of them themselves, so.
And Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, and the audience as well, this was an introductory of this issue. This was not meant for the Commission's approval at this time. This will have to come back at next month or whenever as a form of agenda item. So I think the intent was a very -- a great overview, but not -- this is not ready for final, you know, review and approval at this point.
One question I have to give to dead folks here.
Sure.
We have the, what was it? The group in Carmel that we talked about fencing in the middle of the median.
Yes.
So we're going to do a test on one section to look at some of this. Where is that in the context of this?
I think they withdrew that application.
They did.
They withdrew the whole thing, so we're not going to do any testing on doing that.
Right. It might come back. They didn't completely dismiss it forever, but they withdrew the application at this time.
Anyone else from the public care to make an appearance? Doesn't look like it, so I'll go ahead and close that, and then we'll shift to announcements? Looks like we have a couple announcements.
Yeah, we have a bunch of announcements, Mr. Chairman. First off is the Zoom link problem. So we have -- we had a typo apparently in our Zoom link. That's why we could not reach the--
It's not a typo. It's an error with Zoom.
An error with Zoom, so we could not have the people who wanted to participate, potentially people out there who wanted to participate in Zoom. Therefore, well, two things. One is, as soon as this meeting -- this meeting is being video recorded, as soon as it's available, we'll put out a blast to the masses so all the millions of people can watch the video after the fact, and because the -- there's not an opportunity for those in the Zoom world to participate, we're asking the Commission to not make -- to listen to the items before you, but to not make any final decisions. You can listen, you can ask questions, you can provide guidance, but perhaps at this point, no final decisions because not all the people out in Zoom world can participate. That's announcement number one. Announcement number two is the public hearing item number three, Purcell and Tutillion. This is regarding the item that you saw in your sidewalk. Staff is recommending that the Commission consider continuance of this item to open up for a public comment on the idea of continuing the item, and I guess it's making a decision to continue or to go forward with the item.
How do we do that?
There's several reasons of this. We'll talk about this more when we get to it, but also the fact that the people in Zoom world are not available. That's yet another significant reason to consider extension. We'll reread that again on item number three. Next item is, I'm not the city attorney, but I just wanted to report preliminarily. I'll get more information for the next meeting. But there's the prior, during COVID, the prior idea of being able to meet legislative body to meet by Zoom only is coming to an end when the -- if the governor, as expected, declares the end of the COVID emergency at the end of the month. There's a new law, AB 2449, the teleconferencing rules. In the big pictures, they're requesting that the legislative bodies meet more in person. We will still have the hybrid meetings. The Force and Beach Commission has been meeting in person for the last, I don't know, six months perhaps, so kind of more of the same, but the new teleconferencing rules are that we must have a quorum of the Commission, which is three or more, in person. And also, if you need to Zoom in, whether sickness or elder care or whatever the, you know, you need to notify the Commission Secretary in advance, which would be a vet. Don't have to get into gory details, but I will not be able to attend the meeting in person because of an illness, but I will be able to attend by Zoom. So we need to have what's called the just cause. Okay? You can't just Zoom in because it's convenient. You need a just cause. And apparently, you cannot Zoom in more than three meetings in a row, three months in a row. Okay, so there's tightening screws a little bit. Still, the opportunity for Zoom for the Commissioners, but they're encouraging us to attend in person more and more. Okay? And the last, well, several of you have already made the announcement, but Sarah's last day is next week on the 15th. This is her last Force and Beach Commission meeting. In my Public Works report at the tail end, I'll report on how we're going to limp along after Sarah departs. Okay? The show will go on, and I'll just leave it at that. So we'll talk more about that at the end. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements from the Commission or Forester? Doesn't look like it. Then we'll go ahead into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the Commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of Commission discussion and/or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. So first would be to approve the January 12, 2023 meeting minutes.
I move to approve the meetings.
So we've got--
I'll second.
-- a move in a second.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickey?
Yes.
Chair Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is passed.
Okay, and then, as it relates to public comments received after the meeting, Director, how would you like that handled? Would you like those read or?
Well, you could have done it one of two ways. If you approved the consent agenda as a whole, you could have already approved it, but you can certainly approve the consent agenda one at a time.
One and two.
Whatever you like to do. So I would recommend you consider the public comments received after the meeting and approve or, yeah, and do another vote on that.
So the recommendation in front of you as Commissioners is to approve the public comments or received after the meeting, so they become official part of the record. Do we have anyone that would like to move on that?
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickey?
Yes.
Chair Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Sowers?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is passed.
Okay. Well, I guess we're trying to extend it a little bit since we're going to be shortening it so much. All right, so then that takes us into public hearings, and as has, we've been advised that in this situation, because of our Zoom issue, and the recommendation is to not move forward with any final decision-making, then there's a recommendation to continue this particular public hearing, and so I'll open that up to--
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just one more thing to clarify. The applicant, the attorney for the -- representing the applicant is not available today, so the applicant requested the continuance even before the Zoom meeting.
Got it.
Okay, so that's -- that's been on the record.
That's true. Got it. So with that in mind, then, I'm going to open it up to public for any kind of comment--
Comments on the continuance.
On the continuance. Is there anyone from the public that would care to make a comment regarding our intention to continue this matter? Not at this time? Okay, well, then, with that in mind, do we need to make any kind of a motion along those lines, or just move along?
Yeah, I would, yes. I would recommend you make a motion to continue this matter to a date uncertain.
Can I make one comment on just on this particular issue? It'd be really helpful. A lot of documents that are coming through on this particular seem to be counter what was actually ruled on by the Forest and Beach Commission, Planning Commission, et cetera, over dates. One lawyer's saying one thing, another lawyer's saying another, and it's very confusing as a Commissioner to understand the history of this issue and what is accurate to the record versus what's being presented by the attorneys, which seem to be counter to each other. And so as a Commissioner, it's hard for me to understand what's accurate and not accurate. Is there any way that we can confirm, or just, I guess I should just go to the minutes from those previous meetings and try and validate it against what was presented by the attorneys?
You certainly could do that. If I may, well, I want to do a shout out to Catherine Wallace, who stepped in at the last minute to prepare the agenda report. It has my name on it, but believe me, I didn't -- I think I edited a few things, but anyway, I think the agenda report, prior to receiving the additional information over the last few days, which, yes, is confusing, I think the agenda report spells out the history of the situation.
And that's an accurate--
That's an accurate rendition, right. And yes, there's opposing attorneys. There's neighbors that potentially are at odds, so we're trying to get the Commission the most accurate information, and we're ready to proceed, except, you know, the applicant, like I said, the applicant's attorney had a medical situation.
Okay.
And also Zoom is not helping things. And certainly, at any time between now and the next meeting, or whenever this is heard again, you're certainly free to give me a call, or whoever the forester is at the time, and wishes be me, but we'll get to that.
Can't wait to see you driving around the Gator. Would someone care to make a motion for continuation?
May I ask a question?
Please.
Is it, just why would we not continue to the next meeting? You said to a date uncertain. That's why I, it seems like--
The attorneys have requested different dates, so I notified them that should the Commission continue this item, that we would huddle and determine what a date is that's mutually acceptable. Okay, so they had different, you know, one attorney wanted to go forward today, the other attorney said they couldn't, the other, one attorney said, let's try it at the next meeting, the other attorney said, no, I can't do it at the next meeting. So we don't have a date certain. We will, it will come back.
I think with that being said, you certainly could make a motion that it be continued until the next meeting, and I think it's your prerogative to do that, and if it's supported, so be it. So, yeah.
I think I would make a motion that we continue this item and take it up at the next Forest and Beach Committee meeting.
Okay, we've got first and second. Uh-oh, you're back to being secretary.
You've got a lot of roles.
We're way worse.
I'll do it.
Last month was a lot more interesting, believe it or not.
I'll do it. So it's been moved and seconded that this public hearing be continued to the next meeting of the Forest and Beach Commission. Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Mickey?
Yes.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Sowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, then we move on to orders of business.
Thank heavens.
Sorry, thank heavens. Orders of business are agenda items that require City Council, Board, or Commission discussion, debate, direction to staff, and/or action. And to lead that off, we're going to receive a presentation. Sorry? What? Is that what you're supposed to say?
I'll introduce it.
Do you want to introduce it?
Do I want to? I probably should.
Well, then I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to you.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to introduce the Leadership Carmel Class of 2023. They have an interesting proposal regarding two different city parks. One's at Devendorf Park, one's at Forest Hill Park. They're quite different, but they're both equally interesting. This item before you today was intended for the Commission to either approve the projects, one or do, or, you know, or modify, or deny the projects, or make adjustments. Because of the Zoom issue, we won't recommend that the Commission doesn't make a final determination. Certainly, listen to the matter, provide guidance. We can come back perhaps even on consent as a slam dunk to finalize, to finalize things. We could do that. If the Commission eventually approves the item, it still requires an accroaching permit, a potentially a planning review, just like the Forest Theater landscaping project. So we're looking, we're seeking Council guidance on the overall concept and the details, installation details, maintenance, whatever, would be handled at a staff administrative level at that time. With that, my pleasure to turn it over to one of the Leadership Carmel, there's going to be two presenters. The first one is Elizabeth O'Mallory? O'Malley? O'Malley? O'Mallory?
O'Malley.
Okay, O'Malley.
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 Yes.
Leadership, Elizabeth O'Malley.
Yes.
And then it's on the-- And then it's on the, I think Sebastian, you were going to share your screen? Sebastian?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Liz O'Malley, and I'm a member of Leadership Carmel. Leadership Carmel is a nine-month professional and personal development program designed to provide a solid development framework to inspire and serve current and future leaders and influencers in Carmel by the Sea and surrounding communities. So we have eight members of our group present today, as well as our two directors, so I wanted to take this opportunity to invite them to stand up just for a minute and show themselves.
Real quick, Sebastian, can you switch over to the Forest Hill Park piece? There it is, perfect.
And while developing leadership skills and making connections with the community leaders, the class will serve and leave a legacy gift to the community. We would like to clarify that the first class of the program did the Hearts of Carmel Project two years ago, which you might have seen around town. And the Hearts Project had a new sponsor the second year, so that wasn't Leadership Carmel. The second class of the program for their legacy project did Dance Through the Decades Project, which was on behalf of the Carmel Youth Center, so I'm not sure if you saw that, but it was very well attended and popular and a lot of fun. So in the spirit of these two popular projects, we wish to present two proposals to the commission. So I'd like to present our first proposal, Forest Hills Park, Proposed Nature Play Improvements. One of nine parks in the city of Carmel, Forest Hills Park is the only park with play structures. We propose low-cost steps to bring community members of all ages together to enjoy playing in nature. Next slide, please. What is nature play? Our objective is to introduce more nature play to Forest Hills Park. It's a type of design that provides engagement for all five senses. And research shows that children who are playing on nature play structures play longer and have a lot more agency in how they choose to play. It's also an opportunity for environmental stewardship, which I know is a priority for everyone. Next slide, please. We've broken the design into three phases, starting with taking care of some deferred maintenance, which involves making the grassy area in the park a beautiful running field for children, for the public to enjoy using the smooth surface by doing some unique ideas of non-toxic gopher abatement. The second phase would be adding some educational enhancements, as well as some nature play structures, so. So I'm so excited to show you guys the map and then go through these phases of the design. Next slide, please. Oh, this is our map. It describes the three different phases of our design. So the first priority would be working on non-toxic gopher removal, using cinch traps in a method that MeEarth has trained us how to do, one member how to do, and also biological pest management with locating a hawk perch, as well as an owl box at specific locations on the tree line. The second portion is creating an outdoor classroom, sort of near the horseshoe area and the trees up there, as well as adding the wooden braille alphabet panel on the southwest corner. And then the third phase involves placing new nature play elements, including the log tunnel, which is really fun, as well as border five-piece log clusters and landscape items on the perimeter of the park, which will also be dual-purpose furniture. So now we're going to go into the different phases in detail. So Phase One, taking care of those little gophers. And currently, the grassy area is an area for storm drainage, so a lot of the gophers have kind of moved up into the hills since the heavy storm, but as we know, they love grass, so they're going to come back down for sure. There's a method of catching gophers using cinch traps, so that's kind of what we'd like to do there, so we're not using any chemicals. Next slide, please. And then also the hawk perch. Having a steady perch for a hawk allows them more accuracy when they're hunting, so also it discourages gophers from being in the field. So we have specifications on that and statistics, so. And then the next slide, please, shows us the owl box. One owl at night can eat up to 10 to 12 gophers, and a family of owls will eat up to 3,000 a year. So we might have to provide gophers for the predators, which isn't that bad. Okay. And then the next slide will show, after that, oh, let's move, we'll fill in some of those gopher holes, smooth out the surface, and then reseed the grass, so. Then after that, we'd love to do some more inclusive play structures that also provide a learning element. So this is a braille panel that we'd love to place on the southwest corner within the existing play structure, so that the kids can enjoy it together. So, next slide. This is the main feature in the outdoor classroom, that's going to go in the tree grove, and yeah, the chalkboard is made out of annealed steel, it has a ceramic coating that's tinted, it's scratch proof, and it's not like chalkboard paint, it's meant to take a beating, so. Next slide, please. And then these describe the public use classroom furniture, which will include stumps. These, we've costed them for an average age group of fifth, excuse me, fifth to eighth grade, but we could also bring that lower, from first to fourth grade. So there's two different sizes, as well as the activity tables. So current, our current proposal provides seating for eight students, as well as a teacher, so. Last phase is playtime. The log tunnels provide an opportunity for many different forms of interaction that are fun, and these are perimeter elements that we'd like to place on the south side of the existing play area, the five-piece log. So our group will either locally source, build, or fund materials with fundraising and volunteer labor to install. We thought about using some of the recycled elements from the city's Rio Park location, potentially reusing them. The outdoor learning classroom will be vendor sourced, and, as well as the braille panel. And then the open field is going to require labor, seating, and drainage rock at the end of the hillside that we will fund. The tunnels and clusters will either be vendor sourced or made, so. We believe in making Forest Park more, Forest Hills Park more accessible to all residents and visitors to Carmel. This will build community, support families and children and visitors, and also be inclusive for all ages and abilities. This concludes the presentation on Forest Hills Park, and at this time, I would like to invite any questions on the presentation.
I have a question on the chalk, is it actually a chalkboard?
The chalk, and what, does rain ruin the?
That's a really good question. It's B-Y-O chalk. So currently, we didn't put the materials cabinet, that is another furniture that we could add, but yeah, in this particular, since it's a public use, we thought, people sometimes get really picky about their chalk, there's some beautiful chocks from Japan, so yeah, that's, yeah, thank you for the question, though.
And rain won't hurt it? Rain doesn't hurt the chalkboard?
No, it's out, oops, sorry, it's outdoor. It is an outdoor grated chalkboard, and it's not, it's not, let's see, I have some more notes on it. Yeah, it's magnetized, which is really interesting. It's also, yeah, the ceramic coating is baked on and tinted black, so it's scratch proof, and it's an annealed steel, which means the metal is heated and allowed to cool a little bit slowly, so it kind of makes it easier to work with on those things, so.
It's good, the park needs a lot of help, so if it sounds like, that would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a question. So we, as a commission, had gone up to the Forest Hill Park and had looked at a lot of the children's structures there, which were in a little bit of disrepair. I know some of it's been modified a little bit, but I know there were certain structures in there we were concerned about from a safety perspective, as well as just kind of bringing those structures into a little more of safety and maybe newness to them, because they were kind of rusted out. Is that part of the plan as well? I didn't see any of that in here.
No, actually, but...
If I may answer that, we do, I think we ordered the part, the replacement part, parts that were rusted on the play structure.
We got a quote.
We got a quote, I don't know if we...
$6,500 to, for the parts, to replace the parts that are rusted.
It took a long time for us to get that quote, but we recently got it.
So we don't have a labor cost to go with that yet, though.
And in terms of the, we were going to regrade out that, that area.
Right, that's part of their deal, right?
It's part of their deal, and we were going to seed it. We couldn't raise the grade of that because it serves as a detention pond of sorts in the rain. Sarah, can you talk about the seeding and why we deferred it, or?
Because the area flooded.
Yeah.
So it worked as a stormwater detention facility, and it filled up with water, so the ground is still really wet, so we can't drag it flat, plus the gophers are still there. So it's ripe to be overseeded as soon as we can get rid of the gophers.
We are, it's still on the list to be regraded and still serve as a detention pond. Whether or not it's receded, we'd like to, so that's, that's as far as we got, it's on the list.
Because I, I mean, I just, we kind of, I know you said the $6,000 quote on certain things being replaced, I know there was an issue of, one of the things that the kid slides on and goes across, we were concerned about there had been some broken arms and this or that, and we've made...
It's on the far end.
It's on the far end.
I thought we decommissioned it, but maybe not.
Yeah, I wasn't quite clear.
I don't think we landed on a decision. When we met out on site, I suggested that that area could be repurposed, possibly for one of the log tunnels, and then take that piece of equipment out. It's not very functional unless you're a taller child.
Right.
So they kind of have to team up to get on there, and it's, it's kind of scary, fling a kid right off the end. I think when we heard from the director of the youth center, she's the one that brought up the fact that they've had two broken arms.
Right.
We are deviating from this nice presentation. Are there any other questions about the presentation? And we'll open this up to public comment after the second part, if that's okay?
Oh, okay.
So that way, well, just for public comment, anyway, there, I think also in the commission might have a question for Liz and what she's presented right here?
Just the funding, how is it going to be funded?
Well, we are capable of figuring it out one step at a time with our group and with the city, and we know, we don't know every step right now, but we're confident that we can raise the resources. That's a part of our curriculum, actually, so this project is kind of taking our in-classroom and applying it in our group. And so far, we've had many ideas for fundraising. We haven't created a plan yet, but I think we've already raised $1,800, I think, just from straight donations, so we do have a bank account. I think we might, it might be through the Carmel City of Chamber of Commerce Foundation. So we've talked about online, also, yeah, we have to develop our strategy, but we pretty much, we have a sort of a quick timeline. So the first phase, when we start the deferred maintenance stuff, we're also going to be fundraising during that time, because the nature play structures involve like a three-month turnaround, so we have, if it's over a certain amount, we have to pay for the whole thing upfront, so. So I'm, I'm excited to fundraise, I think we're going to do a great job, and, you know, we're a very enthusiastic team, and we have nine people, so I feel confident that we can do it. We just have to decide what the design is first and sort of get that clarified, I think, so, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, yeah.
Hi, thank you for the great presentation. I have a question, how are you going to determine the age target? Because I heard you say like K4 and then 5'8", and those are two totally different, like they, that's serving two different populations, so I'm just curious how your group is thinking about that and what your considerations will be in the final design recommendation?
Well, something very interesting about that is the structures are, the little, the furniture elements are kind of multi-use, so the stool size for the older age demographic, the grades five through eight, is actually a standing size for the younger children. So that could be a standing table for them. So what I'd like to do is create a design that sort of fits everyone, it can be, even adults can use it. Yeah, I don't think we're going to limit the usage. What we want it to be a more creative approach, because that's sort of what nature play is, it's not having a prescribed usage. So I think that, that's a very good question, and I'll take it back to the group, yeah.
There are two very distinct demographics that use the park. There's lots of little kids, lots of little kids, and then the youth center takes their summer camps there pretty consistently, so they're grade school age kids, so that having both age groups kind of together is, I think it would work fine.
And some of us that are still kids at heart occasionally go down to the park, too.
I wanted to hide out in that log.
There you go. Well, thank you very much for the presentation on, on this park, it's a wonderful asset to the city, and certainly consideration of how to improve it is something that we enjoy hearing about, and we'll look forward to making the decisions at a later date, but...
Did you want to turn it over to a...
I think we've got a second presentation.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the second part.
I'd like to introduce Elaine Lazarus, she's going to be presenting the second presentation for our group, so thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Liz.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Elaine Lazarus, and I am also part of the 2023 Leadership Carmel Group. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our ideas for our group projects. We believe that, oh, next slide, sorry.
Sebastian, next slide.
I didn't know who's... We believe the Devendorf Park Beautification Project is important because the monuments in the park act as historical touchstones. They link the past, the present, and enable our community to remember and respect the sacrifice of those who died, fought, participated, or were affected by conflicts. By making improvements and additions to memorials, it ensures they continue, the continuing relevance for local remembrance. The project will include removing some of the hedges on the east side of the World War II Memorial, and two, and removing two agapanthus plants for better visibility. Next slide, please. So here's a map of the park, and in the, where it has the semicircle, in red are the, is the area where we would be removing part of the hedges, so you could see the World War II Memorial easier from both sides. We want to refresh existing vegetation and add new flowers and plants to each memorial. The flowers we are suggesting have symbolic meaning to each memorial. We would also like to restore the area around the Korean War Memorial by leveling the ground underneath it in order to remove it from the mud. We are also proposing to add a new memorial to the park to remember the atrocity of the Holocaust, its victims and survivors. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We have two local licensed companies that have volunteered their labor, and Leadership Carmel will identify more volunteer labor as needed. We will also raise money for the materials. Next slide, please. The proposed flowers around the Korean Memorial is the hibiscus flower. The hibiscus flower is a symbol of beauty, love, passion, friendship, hospitality, and joy. And we also want to plant forget-me-nots. The forget-me-not flower is a symbol of love and respect. Next slide, please. Um, we would like to plant daisies around the Vietnam Memorial to symbolize happiness and friendship. Next slide. We, for the nine-eleven memorial, we would like to plant, um, the giant chain fern, which is a symbol of longevity, rebirth, and renewal, and the California peony, which is symbolic of love, honor, happiness, wealth, and beauty. Next slide, please. Around the World War II Memorial, we would like to plant red poppies. The red poppy flower is a symbol of remembrance and hope for a peaceful future. Next, okay, good. Um, for the proposed, uh, Holocaust memorial design, um, the location will be, um, next to the World War II monument, because the Holocaust occurred during World, World War II. And the design will include eighteen river rocks that will have drilled holes in them uh, with, uh, succulents planted in the holes. And they will be arranged in a, uh, twelve-foot circle with a large rock in the middle with a plaque on both sides. And, um, the eighteen rocks symbolize life, because, um, in Hebrew, um, the word chai means eighteen, which means life. And, uh, the succulents will, um, symbolize enduring and timeless love. Next slide, please. Why add the Holocaust memorial? Um, a quote from, uh, the director of the United States Holocaust Museum says, uh, "It's really a moral challenge to us to do more in our own lives when we confront injustice, or hatred, or genocide." Next slide, please. A longtime Carmel resident and Holocaust survivor, um, is Rhian Eisler. She's lived in Carmel for forty-four years. She's internationally known author, educator, historian, attorney, speaker, and she supports this memorial in Devendorf Park. Next slide, please. And I'd like to play a video of, um, an interview of, with Rhian.
Sebastian, can you make the video go?
Oops.
Emily, do you have, would it be on your thumb drive?
I have it on the shared drive.
On the shared drive? Just give us a moment, please, we'll try to dig it up.
No problem.
I can... Sebastian isn't able to get it to play from downstairs.
I can give you the YouTube link.
Oh, yeah, it's in session.
Okay.
In the meantime, you could ask questions.
Yeah.
That's a great suggestion, Forester Sarah. Uh, anyone from the commission have any questions about this presentation so far?
Uh, my, my only question, so just because it's, um, we're adding another memorial into the park, is that, is that a, is that a standard practice that, that, how does, how do memorials get added to the park? Is that something that's done through, can, can, any, any, any history on that?
I'm glad you brought it up, Brian, because it has been for, uh, they added nine-eleven and made it real small. The one you're describing, twelve feet, is an area that they use for feeding when we have big family things at the park. To my way of thinking, that it would be wonderful to have that kind of memorial, but I would wonder about either Piccadilly Park or the Murphy, uh, MJ Murphy Park. This, this is really a family place. The, people participated in these wars, of course, and then you have the World War I, uh, monument with the arched area at, uh, San Carlos. So, to me, what we have now as memorials, there is the most we should have, so that there's plenty of room for these family things that, that go on. And that's kind of really the focus of it, since I was a kid here in the forties. It's always been family-oriented. It's a worthwhile memorial, it, it, but it, would there be a, I think there would be a better place for it.
Um, well, the area, so, do you know what area I'm talking about?
I'm looking at your map there.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, the idea behind the, having a Holocaust memorial is, uh, for, for chil- well, I mean, kids learn about the Holocaust in, uh, schools. So, it is, it, the, the idea behind this is for them to realize. It, it's, also represents inclusiveness and, um, to treat your neighbor like they should be treated. And, um, it's, it's, it represents more than just a war memorial. It represents, um, not bullying and to, um, not forget, because there's so much antisemitism nowadays, and it's getting worse and worse. So, that was the idea behind it.
And that area there...
Let's look for a different area, I would hope. And I think the city would need to agree to put something like that in the city park, not, not because it has anything to do with the Holocaust, just taking, you know, whether you're gonna add...
Yeah, so the, the area that they're proposing is behind that semicircular box hedge, and we've actually cleared a lot of the overgrown agapanthus out of that area, so now it's just kind of a, a area of mulch that has the...
That's not the grass area that's...
No, no, behind the hedge.
Where they've served some things, isn't the grass area that, I mean, I, I think the space, when you have a real family thing, that, that's like Fourth of July or something, you, you use the whole park. And it is, you know, and I, maybe memorials aren't even noticed too much that day, because other things are going on. But I think that, um, that has to be considered really carefully.
I think it would be subject to the city council approval to add a new...
Yeah.
Uh, memorial. I, I think landscaping and existing memorials, that could be done at administrative level with a grant and permit and the normal process. But a new memorial would certainly be, uh, subject to the city council approval. But of course, they would look to, of course, the beach commission's recommendation, yea or nay, uh, uh, you know, to make their decision.
There is one other thing that needs to be considered there, and that's the statue of, uh, that's really a head statue of Devendorf, who gave the park to the city and was, you know, one of the founders. I don't know if you saw that. It's hard to see. It needs help, because it's all, it's all in a corner.
Well, it looks like we've got the video available, so it'd be great to watch it. And then if there are additional comments from the commission, that'd be great, and then we'll open it up to the public, so Sebastian wants to...
Can we play it?
Make that play?
It looks, can you push that?
I don't think we can push our statement.
So close.
Can you do that?
Oh, there it is. Nope. Yep.
There you go.
Hi, Rhian, I want to ask you a few questions. So, what do you think about leadership's proposal to add a Holocaust memorial in Devendorf Park?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Why?
Well, I think now is the time to make a statement, and that memorial will make a statement against in-group versus out-group thinking and acting and violence. Uh, we must remember what happened when people did not speak up. It was the death of six million people, six million Jews, uh, plus another two million of others who were deemed, quote, "inferior" or "dangerous." Uh, and we're seeing so much hatred today and so much violence against people who are blamed, when really, uh, they're just trying to be, like the six million and the other two million that were killed. So, I think it's important for communities like Carmel, which are a Mecca for tourists from all over the world, which have a population of people, really, from all over the world, to stand up, especially at this time, and say, "Yes, we will never forget, and we will never be silent."
Thank you, Rhian.
Thanks, Elaine, is that available, um, in the public domain?
Yeah, it's on YouTube.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, in closing, we believe this project aligns with the village in the forest spirit of Carmel by the Sea, and honors the sacrifices and history of its residents and visitors. Thank you. Any questions?
Any other commission comments?
I've got, I've got a, a comment.
Mm-hmm.
I affirm what you're saying one hundred percent. And I believe that, um, that this town, I'm, I'm assuming that you're aware that we now have added a, uh, a menorah lighting with our tree lighting.
Yes.
Which is wonderful. Um, as a parent of students who were raised in the district and still have it, high school student, um, I think we have some issues in this town around this. And I think that to affirm this and to, um, display this, it, it may not be something that the, that the Forest and Beach Commission decides on. It might be a, you know, city council, but, um, I, I just wanted to say that I do hear what you're saying, and I can understand the thoughts that go behind it. And I just want to say that whether or not it needs to be changed in its form to some extent, that can be worked out if it were to be approved, but I just wanted to affirm...
Thank you.
What your feelings were.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Elaine, I'll just close by, um, telling you how appreciative I am of the thoughtfulness around the, the flower and, uh, shrubbery choices, specifically the, how you're defining them and how they, what they mean to those specific memorials. So, um, it's a, a well-thought-out plan, and we'll look forward to having some additional discussion about it. So, um, that, I'd probably like to open up, well, I would like to open up to public comment. Is there any public comment, um, around this presentation from our friends in the leadership of Carmel?
You can be seated, oh.
Oh, thank you.
You're gonna have to stand there for the rest of the meeting.
I, I would. I would if I were you.
Yeah, please, Dale.
Thank you, that was really good. We, Cindy Lloyd, well, I'll just say, five of us went and met with them at the very beginning, and it's good to see we inspired them to do things with landscaping in Carmel by the Sea. Um, I might suggest, we haven't really had a conversation, uh, one of their volunteers is actually driving, the gator driver now for us, if it would ever stop raining, Bill Kerr, who's in behind me here. I would suggest, I mean, one of my concerns is the play structure is past end of life, and it's sort of like our street sweeper, which we are getting a new one in a couple of months. Uh, you know, do we keep putting six, seven thousand dollars plus labor to keep repairing something which has already achieved end of life? Or should we have a bigger vision, get a grant? And there are grants available for this sort of thing, by the way. Uh, I would suggest that this entire group, including the leadership group and all of you, go up to the new Delray Park, Delray Oaks Park, that I was involved with, with, uh, the owner of Bruno's, who spearheaded the whole thing. And it's a public-private partnership with their Public Works Department, and it's been really good to see what they've done. They've got a state-of-the-art playground structure. It's got the new padded surface, as opposed to wood chips, which really aren't safe. Uh, you might change the vision a little bit, you know? Forest Hill Park really could use a whole refresh of the whole thing. And rather than putting good money after bad, maybe we need to take a look at that. But what, what was suggested was really good. You know, I thought it was really good ideas, and I think those play structures look excellent.
Where is the Delray Park? Is that near the tennis courts there?
It's the best-kept secret.
Yeah.
You, uh, you know where Hana Garden Center is there? Where the church is, you go down the hill?
Yeah, and the tennis courts are right there.
Instead of turning, turning right to go into Hana, turn left and just follow it along, and it dead ends.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, it's really something, they put a whole brand-new parking lot. I mean, it's turned into a big deal from replacing the basketball court, which is now in. They're gonna redo the baseball field. There's another play structure area they're gonna redo. They're redoing their field, sort of like, it's very similar, just less trees. But it's, uh, it's something you should all go look at. It's, it's, it's interesting. All right, I have some other thoughts, but I'm out of time.
Thanks, Dale, appreciate it. Anyone else from the public care to make a comment about the presentations that we received? It doesn't look like it, so that in mind, we will continue on in our orders of business.
Mr., Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
I just had a question as to whether or not we could add that, a trip to that park on one of our next outings. It looks like we're gonna continue to see park beautification presentations, so maybe we could see the one that Dale was just referring to.
We can check if that's kosher as your legislative body, probably, I don't know. Well, that's a good, that's an interesting question.
Or maybe, or maybe, maybe be inclusive, maybe be inclusive and consider all our parks, but that maybe we could have some sort of schedule to visit them.
Yeah, we'll check with our city clerk on that, or maybe...
The only thing I would counter on, just a little bit on, with Dale on this, is that, I mean, I get the good money after bad, but I think six, six thousand dollars to kind of fix what's broken right now and be a safety issue for the kids that use that facility? Because given timelines to redo everything, and we're talking two to three, four years out before we'd really be able to organize anything that would be significant. And I think a six-dollar, six thousand dollar investment in just cleaning up and making safe what is there for the kids that use it today is money well spent.
If I could argue, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. We've already done some things, Sarah, the snout on the slide. I mean, this has been going on.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I totally agree that it's a great idea to look at a bigger picture, but understanding the timelines here are pretty far out for something that's significant.
It's a project, and, and there is grant money, I mean, they got grants. And it's, it's pretty exciting, actually. I think, just informally go up there, just, you don't need to make a big deal out of it, just go up there. And if you like, I could arrange with the people that did it to maybe even come in and talk at the next meeting about this. Thanks. I don't mean to interject.
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, before we go on to the next orders of business item, which I think is the foresters' report.
It is.
Uh, could you, uh, could the commission, although we're not providing, uh, making a firm decision at this point, perhaps provide some big-picture guidance back to Leadership Carmel? For example, if, uh, either of these park concepts is completely un, un, you know, intolerable or whatever, uh, that, maybe that's some information they need to know now, so they can maybe narrow it down or focus on certain things. Or maybe the commission so far feels that this is exactly, these are both fantastic. As presented, we already talked about the Holocaust location as, uh, maybe needs some refinement. But what we'd like to do is the staff would work with the Leadership Carmel team to take it from, this was again, here's the, our, here's our concept, what do you, what does the commission think? Uh, perhaps they can, uh, scale it back, or add something, or modify something, or hey, it looks great as is. And then from, from there, we can, uh, revisit it at the next meeting, but, and hopefully at that point, we can approve something.
Okay, I'd like to begin, I say, I think both of the projects are good. And so, uh, if, if you can keep the, uh, park, the, the one, what do you call the one up the...
Forest Hill?
Yeah. From being too wet, I mean, I keep wondering about how it gets so wet in the middle, you, you know, is there something that can be done, I don't know, to lift the ground or put a drain or something? Because I think that it's, it's a great opportunity for families, and I think that's good. And I think cleaning up the par- the, uh, park at, on Ocean Avenue, uh, is really important in, in fixing the monuments that are there. And I've already said what I thought about the, I thought there are better places for the other one. But I th- I think you're on two important things for Carmel.
Commission, any discussion amongst ourselves about either-or? Commission, any discussion amongst ourselves about either/or? I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it's one or the other ultimately that they'll choose, or is it perhaps both?
It, it could be both.
It could be both?
It could be both. But, but now would be the time if, if, my gosh, don't, don't mess with Devon or Park. I think they would appreciate that kind of sentiment now versus proceeding down the road and do fundraising and things. So again, big-picture guidance from the commission would, I'm sure would be helpful to them.
I have a lot to say about the park. I had two sons who spent a lot of time there and...
Forest Hill, right?
Of course. And I think that your ideas are great. I think that you could, you could expand on some of your ideas. Some of them, I like the logs, logs may, maybe that would go up and make a little bridge. I think that the tunnels are great. I think that the kids would have a great time with that. If you have a bigger log that was hollowed out, you, that you can make a little door, almost something you could walk into, so it would be like a little house. I think using nature in that way would be fun and beautiful and I think you're right. Any rocks that you can get, kids like to climb up rocks, anything that is a natural thing that children could play on, get exercise, would be wonderful. And about the park, I agree with Commissioner Myers. I think your choice of flowers and plants are exquisite. I think that the thought behind them is beautiful, the, the poppies, that really touched my heart. I have an English husband who wears his poppy on Remembrance Day every November 11th, so I think that that's very, very special. And I would like to see some, something done with the Holocaust. I think that would be a beautiful thing to add to our park. And so just work, working with scale and size, I think all of your ideas are wonderful and very thoughtful. So I was happy to hear them. Thank you so much.
I'll, I'll add on to the Forest Hill Park. Certainly, all three of my children spent many, many hours enjoying that park and, and as did I and my wife and it was a great opportunity to meet other families. You mentioned, Liz, I think, something about wanting to create more of an intergenerational opportunity, right? And creating some, I think, some soft steps in. You know, one of the things about that park is its accessibility can be a little tricky sometimes, for sure. And I think the city actually, didn't we finish some fencing up along the top recently?
It's been approved, it hasn't been installed.
Got it. Well, that's a good step, it's been approved and hasn't been installed. I'm sure it's on the list. That, just in general, that when I think of that park and ways to create more true intergenerational activity, perhaps more seating just in general? Because there, typically when families come in, they tend to take up most of the benches that are there as they've got their strollers and their friends. And again, it was a wonderful place as a young family to get to know other young families. But I could certainly see all ages actually there enjoying children playing and taking advantage of the park. You know, just a quick little side story, there used to be a volleyball court, or volleyball poles anyway, in the, in the grassy hole-filled, or not holes filled, but wholly parked there. And it spurred a, a huge volleyball community that's now on the beach. So you never know what can come from that kind of a place and certainly having it be accessible and be something that's safe helps too. So I'm, I'm really excited about your thoughts and, and ideas around the park and no doubt, I mean, much bigger ideas in terms of how we've talked about as a commission about the structures. And Brian, you're right, we, as we've visited this in the past, we know it will take a multi-year turnaround and perhaps we can get some good guidance from Dale and the folks that, that were able to secure the grants and that might help expedite it and that'd be really exciting for us and, and for the city, for sure. And yeah, I, I made my comments about the thoughts on Devon Dorf. It's a treasure for the city and its occupants and I certainly support the notion of, at least in first steps and kind of what's in, I believe, our purview is the cleaning up of it. And, and then, you know, it's a much bigger project that I think you, you want to take on as it relates to adding anything officially into it. And I believe you heard our director comment to that fact and we don't know the process, at least I don't believe any of us as commissioners are aware of the steps it will take to actually be able to officially introduce something in there. But, you know, be good on you to see how you go about that process and, you know, certainly a learning experience if anything. So those are my thoughts.
I think I'd just like to echo what the other commissioners have said. I think they were both very thoughtful, considered presentations and I appreciate the effort that you as a group put into them. It's great to see that kind of commitment and concern and care for our community. So thank you for bringing them today. The one thought I would have for you is that I think with any of these projects, there's always an ongoing maintenance component, which is what happens after you come in and do the beautification. And we've many, we often hear that things get started, but then we have, for example, the presentation that kicked off today about the medians on Ocean Avenue, right? We've got a lot of cleanup and some really great vision about what can happen with those medians. But there is a, it's, we're coming back and doing, I don't know if I want to say deferred maintenance, but we're doing maintenance and investing in that. So I think the one thing that could strengthen both presentations is to have some thought to what you think the ongoing commitment would be to maintain these projects, whether it was, you know, you don't have to assign who's gonna do it, but just have some sense of scale or cost or labor that would help all the, the people who'll need to approve these things. That's it. Thank you.
I'm good, I think I've had my comments.
Did we do okay there, Bob?
Good.
Okay, perfect. Then we will continue on in our orders of business and hand it off to our city forester who will give her very last monthly report.
Thank you. So I wanted to talk about the storm and just kind of what happened with the storm. So I counted 40 trees that completely went down and then 44 more trees that had large limbs that were broken out. Of all of those 88 instances, 20 PG&E had to be involved with power lines. The worst part of town that took the brunt of the storm was between Fifth and Second, between Torres and Carpenter. So that was really where the biggest trees went down. There must have been a microburst or something there because it was really interesting that it was really isolated to that one specific area. With that being said, we've had to bring in some contractors to help us with that cleanup. That's just about wrapped up. So the total cost of the storm is kind of hovering around about $100,000, just in terms of cleanup. We did really well with our staff who were on-call and came in after hours to keep the emergency evacuation routes clear so that if there was an emergency, emergency vehicles could get around. The fire department was a huge help. They cleared some roads for us after hours, as well as the, the PD, who are our kind of first responders to put eyes on things so we could either deploy our crew or send a contractor out to help. So I think as far as storms go, it wasn't too bad, it could have been a lot worse. I will say that overwhelmingly, the trees that failed were Monterey pines and most of the broken limbs were out of the Monterey cypress. So we have started in on our tree inventory in the public right away. So Davie Resource Group started on Monday, so we have four inventory technicians that are walking through town inventorying all of the trees. You'll see them in their fancy yellow vests and such, so that data will come back and help guide the, the master planning process. We do have our on-call tree services bid out on the street. The bids are due next week, so hopefully we'll have some contractors back on our, our shelf to be able to use when, when we need them. Let's see, what else? We got the quote for the playground structure back in, that was about, yeah, about $6,500. And then, of course, if you don't already know, I have taken a job as the first urban forester of the city of San Jose. I'm, it really is during my time here that my passion is really in policy and planning and, and leadership of big projects that, and I can see the impact in the community. So my heart really lies with environmental and social justice and I think it can make a really good positive impact with San Jose. So sad to leave you all, but I'm excited about the next chapter, for sure. Alrighty, let's move on through our report here. Hey Sebastian, can you turn, oh, I'm already back on. Okay, never mind. So, you know, January in terms of the numbers, not a whole lot of exciting stuff going on. So we did have that big storm, so we didn't process that many tree permits. So those are, those are starting to roll out now. So these numbers in February will go up. Let me get the mouse to work. There we go. So here's, you know, you can see our end-of-year numbers for how we're doing across time. So last year was a really great year for pruning and, you know, our removals ticked up a little bit, but still they're staying under the trend of about 150 a year. So this is where the storm was really impactful. So over time, you can see kind of our administrative work over each month. Well, in January, you can see it went completely through the roof. So those were from failures and inspections. After the storm, everyone was very concerned about their Monterey pines and they wanted them looked at. Also, you can see here, this is our, our fresh desk tickets, so that's where we take in voicemails and emails and things from the public. So you can see that there was a massive amount of correspondence that resulted from the storm. So we're still unburying ourselves, think we got all of the storm things taken care of and we're getting back to our regular day-to-day type of work. So hopefully you'll see here in February, hopefully this bar won't be quite as huge for Tom's sanity, for sure. So that's just about everything there. Are there any questions or, or comments or anything?
Commissioners, any questions for our forester? Why is she leaving?
Sarah, the chubby.
Why is she leaving now?
The back, the second half of the year on your administrative task, task monitoring? The whole second half of the year was significantly higher than the first half of the year?
Yes.
So what is, what are the key things driving that?
So it's really tracking. So we didn't start really tracking the correspondence until July. So that, that turned on with the beginning of the fiscal year. So really you can only compare contacts just from July till now. So we didn't have the data for, for the previous months. But you can kind of see that the number of inspections stay pretty consistent each month and not too many failures. So yeah, it's really a matter of tracking.
The only thing I was gonna say, probably more to Bob, I was gonna bring it up in your, in your report, but, you know, I know with Sarah leaving that the city's gonna have to pick up the slack here. And I know if there's anything that the Forest and Beach Commission can do, whether it's individual or as a group here to support, you know, the challenge of Sarah being gone until you hire a new forester? I mean, I could throw my hats in the ring there. If anything we can do to help, I know, you know, the planning commissions, our planning department's having to pick up certain tasks and stuff going on that Sarah would do.
I might call you at 8:01 tomorrow.
That's okay. I'm retired, so I want, I want you to know that I support whatever we can do.
Appreciate that. We do need help.
I knew it was gonna be a challenge, so, anyway.
You take phone shifts.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
To review construction plans.
Exactly.
That's, yeah, that takes time.
Anyone else?
I have a question about, because in our final meetings of the year, last year, we were looking at putting together our, our, I forget, remember the entire, our steering committee for, yeah. And I know we were beginning to put some, some information out in the newspapers. Who will be taking over that?
I'll, I'll talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I didn't, yeah, I didn't cover that in that part, but it's, it's still moving forward.
Okay.
Well, sorta.
Tom, Tom is gonna be posing that. We just had a couple of hiccups when we were ready to pull the trigger to publish, then the storm hit, so it just, it slowed us down a little bit, but I think we're back on track to getting that publicized.
Until Wednesday.
No, Tom, have a little faith in Tom.
Are there any public comment for the forester?
Miss you.
Thank you.
Leadership Carmel would like to say the same thing. She's been a wonderful supporter of ours. She's been available to us just about any time we asked for any help. And it was a love of mine, we all really appreciate it. Thank you.
That's nice.
I just wanted to make a comment for the background a little quick.
Lisa Malik from Leadership Carmel. Our Forest Hills Park presentation was inspired by Sarah Davis's knowledge, enthusiasm, yeah, all of that. So we're gonna miss you a lot and we're so excited for your new chapter, but it was great to meet you and thank you for your leadership example.
Thank you.
Nice. Okay, with that, then we'll move into our last order of business. This is our director's monthly report for January.
Thank you. Can you scroll up to one more page, page 80, I think it is?
It's up, like, is it not 81?
Right, we need page 80. One more, up, 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 right there. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, our first topic is city council actions related to forestry parks and beach issues. The first one is at the January 10th council meeting, the city council approved a contract with an engineering firm regarding our concrete streets. What I've mentioned to the, at the past, at the Forest and Beach Commission is a potential bike, bike pathway along Ocean Avenue between Monte Brody Street and San Antonio. Think you might have heard me mention that a couple times. The city council decided to not go forward with that bike path, so that's off the table. Let's see, the next item, there was a strategic planning workshop by the city council on January the 31st at Sunset Center. I think, I'm not sure if anyone was there, but it was, it was really well-attended by the public. There's 24 strategic initiatives by the council that was reviewed. Eight pertain to public works and of those eight, one, two, three, four pertain to forestry parks and beach. So I wanted to very, very briefly touch base on those four strategic priorities of the city council that pertain to forestry parks and beach. The first one is not directly ours, but it's called a fire risk assessment and fire risk reduction strategy. The, this is led by the fire department. They have a consultant named Dudak that's working on a, a plan with the city of Monterey and city of Pacific Grove, city of Carmel. Be a plan on how to minimize the fire risk in the urban forest. Okay? So that report is in progress. When that report is available, that's something I would recommend that, that comes before the Forest and Beach Commission, big picture on how that impacts the forest. The second is the urban forest management plan or master plan. Mr. Mickey was just asking about. So we, we told the, the city council that, you know, it's, it's happening, the Davie Resource Group has started on the technical studies, it'll be coming back. I think when we get to, when the report is in the final draft, it would be, well, of course, there'd be chapters that are presented to the Forest and Beach Commission with the steering committee and then ultimately goes to the city council. But that is something that they are tracking. The next was beautification. The next was beautification efforts, which we asked council for more clarification because, like, for example, Carmel Cares is on a lot of beautification on the, on the Meadine Islands. Professor Wheat was helpful on the Forest Theater landscaping. The downtown detail from Carmel Cares is doing an awesome job, keeping downtown look as, as good as it ever has. We're planting trees as part of the Urban Forest Master Plan. What else was I gonna say? The Ocean Avenue Meadine Island is, is an upcoming project. But we asked the council, could you be more specific? Because we, we track it from zero percent complete to a hundred percent complete. So, some things are more clear-cut. We're done. The climate adaptation and climate action plans have been completed. Boom, a hundred percent goes off the list. Beautification, are we twenty percent? Are we ninety percent? Where are we? So, the city council will be identifying specific projects as part of the upcoming capital improvement program for next fiscal year. We'll see how that goes. So, it's kind of a, it's an interactive process. And there was another topic called, it used to be called Oversight of Volunteer Groups. This started about two years ago. And some history lesson for David. Two years ago, when Carmel Cares was getting started, it was growing. We were in COVID. There was five percent of Bob, of my time to kind of, oh, keep, keep going. And I asked for like, hey, we need some more oversight, we need some help. And it's not just Carmel Cares, it's the Friends of Mission Trails Nature Preserve, it's the volunteers at the North Dunes, it's the Garden Club. There's a bunch, you know, there's, there's quite a few other groups. So, we put on the strategic planning list to have a, someone to oversee the volunteer groups. The city council last week, or two weeks ago, changed it to facilitate the volunteer groups. They know what to do. We're facilitating. We want them to keep going. We try not to get in their way, but we have to guide them so that they meet certain requirements. Mr. Byrne was awesome. He came up, well, because we have to put a number. Are we zero percent done, or I think I said seventy percent done? Mr. Byrne came up and spoke to the council and said, as far as Carmel Cares is concerned, we're a hundred percent. We have facility, we have figured out a way to work really well together, streamline things that we could. There's, it's still a growing process as we get into more and more exotic pros, projects and things. But we really have, it's come a long way from the humble beginnings. So, things are going well there. There's still a ways to go on with the other groups. If you saw the Friday Letter last week, it's on, it's on our website on our front page. The community can now, if they go to our city website, on the very front, it says, if you want to volunteer, your, any time, any talents, whatever you'd like to do, click on this link. There's twenty-seven volunteer, or local organizations, volunteer groups. It's something for everybody, okay? No matter what your time commitment or availability is, or... And of course, Carmel Cares is one of, but there's twenty-six others, so there's, there's a lot. So, we're making progress on that volunteer oversight thing. That's it for the, boring you guys. And then the last thing, as the city forester alluded to, the city council last, this week, on February seventh, approved ninety thousand dollars for purchase orders for John Lay's and Topps Tree Services to pay for some big-ticket invoices that are coming in for the storm recovery. That's it for council in terms of capital improvement projects. Okay, on January the twenty-sixth, Commissioner Brzezinski was there. She and I will never forget that day. But anyway, so I, I was tasked to present the San Carlos Meadine Island Project, which I presented to the Forest and Beach Commission. I don't know, was it November, October, November? There was a lot of community oppositions about the Meadine Islands. At the meeting, we also presented the bike route, the paving project, the big picture, what the whole project's all about. As completely expected, the community at large, very sick, you know, very, very vocal in opposing the Meadine Islands, regardless of the landscaping theme, they just don't want Meadine Islands. What was interesting is that, for the first time, we heard the community opposing the bike route. However, San Carlos is an established bike route. It's been in our general plan circulation element for twelve or more years. It's part of the ultimate Canadian-to-Mexican border bike route that will someday be continuous. That goes right through San Carlos Street. So, that kind of poses a problem. They, the community also complained about the paving. So, the thought, last, we were here at the commission was to come back to the commission with an update, how that meeting went. And so, give you a, read her size your version of that meeting. We're gonna take this, I'm gonna take this to the city council, probably in the March meeting. Hey, council, what do you want to do with this on San Carlos? Because there's a lot of community opposition. Should we go forward with anything? Should we go forward with just the bike route? Should we go forward and pave?
I have to think that a certain amount of the problem with the bikes, at least electric bikes, that they go around, don't stop at stop signs. And they have become really difficult if you're walking and, and they're...
It, it is today, it's a bike, it's an official bike route. It's not signed, it's not striped, there's no nothing. To meet standard, when we repave that street on a, on a bike, I'm sorry, on a truck and bus route, we must meet certain requirements to make it a, a, an official bike route. Well, we don't have to pave the P Street. We don't do anything. But if we were to pave the street, we also need to make it into an official bike route. And the plan, there's plans to extend the bike route all the, you know, up and down across the city to encourage people to get out of their cars and use their bikes. So, it's a bigger picture, but that's where, that's where that little project is at. Okay? Does that summarize it somewhat, somewhat well?
It was an interesting meeting to attend. I think there was absolute consensus that there is no interest whatsoever in having the medians in that, that's several blocks of San Carlos. I think the bike route did come up. I think there's some, there may be some confusion about that the route actually exists now and how that would be implemented in the future. I think it was a little, there was no confusion on the medians.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, yesterday at the, this also goes with capital projects. At the, yesterday at the planning commission meeting, we got full support from the planning commission and the community at large for two projects, the Mission Trails Nature Preserve. This was to, the planning commission approved coastal development permits. The first project is to remove the big tank and the well and the pump house and the power pole. So, that's moving forward. We have, that, that's getting close to starting construction in the near future. The other one is the three drainage projects. One of the problems we had in the storm is that we had flooding at Rio Road and the, along Serra Trail, the road got, got partly washed out. So, these drainage improvements, there's three parts. There's pipes, there's a boardwalk, and there's a big glorified swale, so to speak. So, anyway, those have a lot of regulatory permits, official wildlife service, water quality control board, and Army Corps of Engineers. So, it's a, it's a pretty complicated project. But again, we have, we received a file sent yesterday going forward. If I may, Mr. Doolittle, who donated...
A lot of acres.
Yeah, many acres of that preserve.
Eleven, actually.
Or maybe all of it, I don't know.
No, the city had some, he donated eleven.
But he knew the, the full history of the tank, when the tank was built. And he was very pleased that both of these projects are moving forward too. So, that was, that was great to see Mr. Doolittle support the projects. I'm gonna skip that one. Let's see, for climate action, climate adaptation, implementation. We are tentatively scheduled for the March. Forest and Beach Commission is to have our consultant present the first task of the coastal engineering and beach sand survey study. And it's basically an assessment of the existing conditions of the shore. So, that's, I'm sure Commissioner Sowers wants to see that one. And that's, should be good to go for next, next month. That'll be interesting. And that's the first, that's the main project that resulted from the Climate Adaptation Plan, although there's many other, from EV chargers to lots of other things happening. This is a, a major study that results from that plan.
So, are they, so just as a question, are they gonna be, are they gonna be addressing the embankments or the sand structure? Or how do you know exactly what they're gonna potentially?
I think it's mostly in the hard, the hardscape, the, the walls, the revetments. But it's, it's, it's very technical, but we're going to make it so that it's more user-friendly for, not just the commission, but for the public at large. Okay? It's happening.
In March?
In March, in March. Update on volunteer organizations. Carmel Cares introduced pink mutt mitts.
Wait, what?
Which is exactly why I wore a pink tie. It wasn't coincidental at all. Okay, all right, I got that covered. Back in January, Carmel Cares, Shirley Moon, David O'Neil, and Dale Byrne and some others met with public work staff, myself and my management team. And we called it the first summit meeting. And we're gonna do this, I think, quarterly. And we went through every, the cities, every one of our capital improvement projects, every one of our key tasks. Here's everything we got, there's no secrets. And Carmel Cares did the same. Here's all the stuff they're doing, here's the stuff they wanna do, no secrets. And, okay, so it's a mass, a mass amount of things. So, the thought was, how can we better integrate? What can we do to help each other? So, it was a really, I thought, very successful meeting. We're gonna keep that process going, going forward. Myself and Tom Ford, who's on the call, I think, we met with David O'Neil, who's Carmel Cares Communications Director. And he's gonna be doing quarterly newsletters of sorts to the community at large about all the wonderful things that Carmel Cares is doing and the partnership with Public Works and the city. And I said, I begged him not to say that the city are a bunch of lazy bums.
Too late.
Maybe too late. No, but I think it's, it's, it's good. And the intent of this collaboration and the newsletter is to get more donations and more, more volunteers to help with the community. You know, it's win-win. When we get projects in, it's win-win. Is there one more thing? Hold on. Yeah, I already talked about the weather. Okay. Miscellaneous items. Well, Sarah is not the only one who resigned. A couple of Mondays ago, Anyas Martele, who was our environmental... Actually, Sarah came in first.
It was the same day.
Sarah came in at ten-thirty with her letter. I'm leaving. We're just a few weeks' notice. Said, ah, humna, 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 remember Jackie Gleason in The Honeymanors? Humna, humna, humna. That was at ten-thirty and eleven o'clock. Anyas Martele, who presented here, she did, was working on the Mission Trail Nature Preserve projects, on the North Dunes, on the Climate Action Plan. She resigned at eleven o'clock that day, also gave proper notice. And Chip Warrick suggested I not freak out when I called him right after. So, I'm trying not to freak out. But anyways, we have the two, two, you know, two of the four managers in Public Works resigning on the same day. On the flip side, we have a new project manager that would work in a capital project. His name is Javier Hernandez. He'll be starting on February the sixteenth, next week, weekend today. He'll be taking over some of the projects that Anyas and Sarah were doing. So, that helps, okay? But he's gonna be starting from scratch. Let's see. We're starting to plan for an Earth Day event in April. So, we're working, we're working with getting donors and people and places to, you know, have a booth and things like that.
Who, who's leading that charge?
Jessica Weko is our, is our environmental compliance technician. Right?
Environmental technician.
Environmental administration, administrative technician, Jessica. She worked under Anyas. So, she's, that's in progress. Just a very, very brief recap of Forest Theater. You know, it's Forest Theater, the site is a park. And PAC Rep provided their quarterly update in the quarter of eight, October first through December thirty-first. There was thirty-four performances of nine productions. I won't read them off. Combined attendance was five thousand and nine people. And the city provided a check to the city, or PAC Rep provided a check to the city for two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars for ticket user fees. And their next performance is on March thirty-first. So, things are seeming to be going pretty well down there. Okay, the last two topics I have are the other storm-related issues, and then what the heck are we gonna do without a forester? Okay, for the storms, Sarah covered, you know, the more trees and PG&E and those types of things. I think this is when I was cut off last month. Well, first it said, battery low. Okay, we got twenty minutes, we'll be out of here. Boom, we're out. Then we went over to where Sarah is with the laptop, and we kept going. I started to do my public works report, and the internet, it disconnected from the internet magically.
It was like watching The Sopranos episode, the last one. I'm like, what happened?
We were wondering the same thing, what happened?
It's one way to stop your...
But Nova Ramirez, our city clerk, was very helpful that day to kind of keep things going, that was in the public works office. And it was funny, because it was almost at five o'clock that that happened. And it was right, Nova said, I have to leave. Right? She went out the door, the door clicked, and we went offline. Nova, please. So, that's what happened there. So, anyway, big picture on what happened during the storms in January. I think you all know, we had a closure on Highway One for a day and a half. So, the Highway One was detoured along Carpenter and whatnot. That was interesting. So, we provided detour signs. We closed down all the beach access stairs. We posted warnings on the beachfront. I believe all but one, perhaps, stairs are still closed.
That was a couple, that's two, actually.
Three?
They're, they're open.
Three are, three are open?
Yeah.
We have issues with a lot of scour and damage on several of those stairs, so we're still assessing that. We closed the Mission Trail Nature Preserve for about a week and a half because reasons I cited.
Their signs were there anyway.
There were signs there, yes, and no one was supposed to enter. We had several trees down. I think there's still one more redwood tree that's too, it's, it's too soggy to even remove the tree. Too Little Trail, is that, I think? Not sure, okay. The pathway on the west side of San Antonio between Fourth and Second Avenue started to cave into Laura, over its backyard. So, we closed that. We notified PG&E, whose pole is now leaning. Interesting, when AT&T Pro-Am happened, millions and millions of people went on that very path. And I didn't know that until the Pro-Am was done. What do you mean, they went on the path? There was also, it, it, it was a false alarm, but there was a concern that the road itself, the southbound lane, was cracking and potentially falling into the abyss as well. So, there's a big structural problem there. We are talking to a couple different consultants to, to get that thing started. It's gonna be a big-ticket item, so that's as far as I know. We maintained a pile of sand and thousands of sandbags at Mr. Nova's parking lot. We didn't have a problem with the, with actual drainage or flooding. We didn't have flooding in the city. And I think, thank heavens, it rained a lot, it rained hard, but not rained hard continuously in one area. It was more spread out. So, as long as it does that, that's fine. If it was high-intensity rain for a couple of hours in one spot, we would have had... we would have had, we would have had water, you know, on Ocean Avenue and things, or on, on Hennepin Row. We've since restored the Sarah Trail, replaced rock gabions to support, support the road until we get those permanent improvements. We fixed a number of traffic signs and fencing that was damaged by trees and signs that fell in the wind. There was a sinkhole on Fourth Avenue, the pathway down towards the beach, although that beach access stairs is now closed. That's one of the ones that was the most damaged. So there was a variety of pack of different repairs and things that we've, we've pretty much cleaned up the mess with, with few exceptions. The big ticket remaining things are the beach stairs, several of them. That's gonna need some work. And that Fourth Avenue, I'm sorry, San Antonio walk, walking path from Second to Fourth. Those are the two big ticket things we have left. Okay? And last but not least, okay, foresters position, what's gonna happen now? The position is posted and advertised quite a bit. Sarah will be here till the fifteenth. Okay, now hold on. I will be the acting forester as of the sixteenth. I promise not to pave the beach, but I am a civil engineer. I don't know. They tell me to hug a tree every day. That's good advice. I was the interim forester before Sarah started for a few months.
Oh, so your experience.
The world did not end, although it was, it was nice how Sarah's here, thank heavens. Let's see. The field crews that works for Sarah, we have three forestry crews. They'll be reporting to Rob Culver, our Public Works Superintendent, who they used to report to, so kind of going back that, in that reverse. Tom Ford, who has been preparing the agenda reports, remember that, is that one time he did seven public hearing reports, working with Sarah and I. So Tom is gonna be keeping these reports going for Forest and Beach Commission and working on permits and things. Justin Ono, that I think you're familiar with, Justin Ono is a consulting arborist. In fact, we had a kickoff meeting during lunch today. And, um, so he has a purchase order as of next Thursday. He's gonna be, we're gonna be giving him trees to look out for site assessments, to do evaluations. Also, I'll be the forester. I'll sign up on permits. I'll do what I can. I'm not an arborist, so until we have a, a replacement forester, Justin Ono, at least temporarily. Sarah referred to the tree, on-call tree contractors that hope to go, to award at the March seventh city council meeting, hire some tree contractors. In those contracts, we can ask for a, a registered consulting arborist. That could be a task. So what gives us a couple of different options to get caught up because of the storms, and you saw the fresh test off the chart. So we'll have a couple of different contractual options with arborists to help us on the technical side of things. The Urban Forest Master Plan. The planning department's gonna be taking over the, the lead on that. In fact, tomorrow.